Call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Mr. Heisler.
Here.
Mr. Kinsella.
Here.
Mrs. Holt.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Ridgewitz.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Anthony.
Here.
Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Sillsby.
Here.
Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. White. Mr. Galetti.
Here.
Mr. Musgrove.
Here.
Mr. Orlett.
Here.
Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Alderman White is excused. Roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Clay.
Here.
Fire Chief Tom Poor. City Attorney Garrett Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Maitreut.
Here.
Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearman.
Here.
Emily Foltz.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belvo.
Debbie Belvo and Chuck. Mike Parks is here for Chuck Schaefer and Debbie Belvo got called out. Her mother's been ill, so she is not here this evening, so went to hospital. She's excused. At this time, before we have the, I guess we'll go ahead, let me do the pledge of allegiance and then I'll go ahead and go over the disaster etc. So please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who might be new this evening to a meeting, I just want to make sure to remind everyone that if we had a reason to vacate this property because of smoke or fire, we would ask you to calmly go out the front door, cross the street carefully, and please meet in front of the courthouse sign, which is right there in the front quadrant there of the courthouse. If we had severe weather, which tonight looks like we're not having that threat at the moment, we'd ask that you go out the hallway, follow the signs, and the police officers would guide you to the stairway across from the clerk's office that goes downstairs to the sheltered area. That's a place that we all agreed that we would meet if we had to have a storm, a place for safety. Also this evening, I want to direct you to once again, in the agendas that you may have picked up on the counter back there, is the explanation about public participation, and basically in a nutshell, it talks about, you know, wait till you're recognized, when recognized, come to the microphone, give your name and address, keep your comments to about three minutes, try to stay focused on a subject that's in our agenda, or particularly at least a city agenda item, and make sure that things are very civil and of good character. We have no public hearings this evening, so I'm going to open up public participation at this time, and I would ask you to raise your hands and I will call on you. Yes ma'am?
Mary McHugh, 10-503 West Main Street, here in Belleville. Maya Angelo has passed. Racial Harmony thought that we should do something in the public to give our regards to this wonderful woman, and what better place than to be here in this room with the leaders of our city. Why do we speak here tonight about her? Whether you've not met her or not, you would feel like you would know her as a friend, and I have met her. What makes her different is it's the depth and the width of her accomplishments and achievements that are so long and so deep that if you didn't know, that you would think that somebody was pulling your leg. I got that from one of our great writers in the News Democrat a couple of days ago. I thought it was wonderful. Even though she was, she was been awarded the Medal of Freedom in this country, she was really a person that should have had that because of what she had done. All of this explains why, on her death, our country mourns because she feels personal to us. We will not miss her because of what she did, we will miss her because of what she was in our national life. Over and beyond her achievements, she gave us a presence, a warm place in our lives, that we simply cannot duplicate in the American culture. Let us bow our heads for a moment of silence for a woman raped as a child and became mute for seven long years to arise, to make her way, to be one of the greatest American icons ever known. Please bow our heads.
Thank you, Mary.
God rest her soul.
Thank you. It's interesting reading about her in recent days. Very, very wonderful life. Okay, at this time, is there anyone else for public participation? Yes, sir?
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. Nothing new, just an update on a couple of items that we've touched on in the past. First being that two weeks ago, there was mention of having a written response to the questions I raised about TIF 10, the $20,000 additional accrued interest by not making a payment in October, an $824,000 payment that was never deducted from the note, and the balance due on the note, and the missing schedule for note R4. Page one of two is missing, it just starts at page two. If you need more clarification, I can show you the example in R3 that has the page R4 that does not. And next on my list is, this is the second anniversary of me notifying you about the noncompliant ADA sidewalk at 10 East Washington Street. Knowing about a noncompliant sidewalk is opening the city to potential litigation, liability. Not acting upon it has got to be an issue. Having it go on two years now is not acceptable. Something should have been done long, long ago. Truthfully, I expected to notify you of it and have it fixed within a month. It's been two years. And we're just getting the same answer. We're waiting to hear back from the owner. I have this question. If Rick Brown owned that building, would we be patiently waiting two years later for an answer from Rick Brown as to what to do with a noncompliant ADA sidewalk? Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the back corner.
Stuart Lanard, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville. I just read in the Belleville paper about what a, all these trillions of dollars that Linden was throwing our way, but I don't know, I don't see any of it really landing anywhere, because we still quippling over a few policemen and a few police cars. I don't know where all this money's going to. And evidently, politics trumps ability and enthusiasm in this county and city. And I'd just like to say something that's a little off topic in a way, but not really. I called Mark Kern, and he said, "Everybody in Belleville is laughing at me because I jumped in that hole on West Main and tried to sue Lindenwood." Well, I didn't, I called Lindenwood 24 hours in advance, and I said, "You got a serious hazard there, right next to a public sidewalk." And they told me, "Mind your own business." So the next day, I walked by there, and the holes still are. And I figured, "Well, somebody needs to call attention to this hole." So I thought, "I'll just jump in it. That way, something's going to be done about it." And after I jumped in and got pulled out by the fire department and half a dozen other things, they put up about 25 barricades around there. Up until I called attention to it, that was just a big, open hole. And I told Mark Kern, I said, "I know a girl that if she'd have known about that hole, she'd have jumped in and sued Lindenwood for every dime they got." Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Hearing that, I close public participation. This time, we move on to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. And I'd like to start out by, we have a recognition bestowed upon the city tonight. So we have people from our running club, Belleville Running Club, and I think it's the Trapps. If you'd come forward, and we will gladly listen to this exciting news.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Dan Trapp from the Belleville Running Club.
My name's Toby Trapp, and I'm the president of the running club.
On behalf of the Belleville Running Club, we'd like to present this plaque to Belleville, Illinois, for being recognized and designated as an official Road Runners Club Association of America Runner Friendly Community from 2014 to 2019.
Guys, thank you very much. This was very nice when we got word from Wendy that your application, your recommendation had been approved for us to get this designation. I thank the Belleville Running Club. I thank Jim Schneider from the city of Belleville, who I know you're very familiar with. It's been tremendous to see the efforts that you guys have put in, in helping organize and nurture a lot of fitness events. That also goes hand in hand with how the city recently received recognition from Get Up and Go. And I think it speaks very well of the direction we're trying to go as far as being a friendly community for walkers and runners and fitness. And this means a great deal. We're very pleased, we're very proud that you guys stepped forward to help Belleville get this recognition. And we look forward to a lot more exciting things with trails connecting and more opportunities and new events. And I appreciate your efforts. We all do.
Next item is, we're still working towards reviewing, and next meeting, we'll probably finish it up. I'd ask for a motion to reappoint the following three, the following two individuals that are due for a three-year term on the planning commission. I'd ask for a motion to reappoint the planning commission members for this three-year term, Chris Rothweiler and Don Rigney.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Epstein.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to reappoint to the library board, each for a three-year term, Andy Gah, Catherine Crer, and Mary Smith.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Epstein.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I would just like to remind everyone, as we do every month, beginning of the month, we recognize the character word of the month is fairness, meaning playing by the rules, being open-minded, and not taking advantage. At this time, I'd like to call Emily Foltz up to the microphone to give us an update on this comprehensive plan that so many of you have been so helpful in giving input, and your thoughts, and much work. And it's, the process has gone, I think, tremendous. I really compliment you, Emily, and your staff, but let's hear, at this time now, a little bit of an update.
Sure, thank you. So as you all know, we are almost a year into the planning process and quickly approaching the time when we will ask for approval of the plan. We've had numerous public events, a lot of online engagement happening, and really some great feedback that we've received from our residents. So I think we have a great plan that's ready to appear here next month. So wanted to go over a few important dates with you, and a couple of things that have happened in the last month or so. So the final version of our plan, or the most recent version, was posted online on May 9. Planning Commission had a public hearing on May 21, and only one person came to the public hearing. They spoke in favor of the plan and support of adopting the plan. So the next step is to have a public hearing at the city council level. We will do that. We have sent public notice next council meeting, which is Monday, June 16. So at that meeting, we will hold a public hearing and ultimately ask for approval of the plan. Like I said, it is online. A copy for public review is also at the city clerk's desk on the public counter. And if you'd like a print version, please let me know. These things are quite a lot of pages of color and maps. I know some people are fine with reading it online. If you prefer print, please let me know, and I'll happily get one for you, you know, tomorrow Wednesday.
Emily, I'd like to ask that we would at least put a copy and print in both our libraries.
Okay.
And then, Leander, if you would make sure that when she gets them to you, that your staff knows that. If somebody would, because sometimes they come in there in the summer months to cool, and they might gladly sit down and read it, so it would be...
And if you have any comments, the plan is, you know, a work in progress until it's adopted, and even then, we're going to be amending it, you know, year by year. So please let me know. The sooner the better, so we can incorporate those comments, you know, as efficiently as possible. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Emily, thanks again. Public hearing will be the next meeting, and then we'll, at that meeting, it will be on the agenda for a vote of adoption. So thank you for that update. This time, we'll move into approval of the minutes from the last city council meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the city council meeting minutes from May 19. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And ask for a motion to pay the claims, payroll, and disbursements.
Yes, Your Honor, I'll make a motion to pay the claims, payroll, and disbursements. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler.
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion's carry. At this time, we have the zoning board of appeals reports.
Number one, case 32, May 14, Denny Robitelli, Yellow Tomato Imports, requesting a signed installation permit for the area of special control in order to install three vinyl window decals, each measuring six square feet in area at 119 East Main Street, located in a C2-heavy commercial zoning district. Number two, case 33, May 14, Randy Thompson, requesting area bulk variance in order...
Your Honor, can we vote on these separate?
We can vote on them separate. Dallas, what was the, did the city zoning board, they had a...
Yes, a unanimous approval on the first one.
Unanimous approval on one. So we, I'd ask for a motion
So moved.
To approve and have the proper ordinance drawn for case number 32.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Holt. Discussion. All in favor of having this recommendation approved and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Case 33, May 14, Randy Thompson, requesting area bulk variance in order to erect a 16-by-32 foot portable shed in the front yard at 18 Lake Shore Drive, located in A1, single-family zoning district.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to affirm the zoning board recommendation to deny, but also to send this case and issue to the Health and Housing Commission for further review and discussion.
Second.
To send it to the committee?
Correct.
Okay, so we have a motion by Alderman Hayden to approve the zoning board's recommendation of denial, and to send it back to Health and Housing Committee for a discussion and a recommendation?
Discussion and review, Your Honor, yes. We have a, in this particular case, from Alderman Sillsby and I have discussed, we've had contacts from the residents, from what we understand, the variance request was being asked for a building that's actually already built.
Okay.
So there's going to have to be some form of, you know, discussion and mediation, and I think the committee, and it may even involve the city attorney of how we're going to do that, but I'm on that committee, and if agreed to be liaison with Alderman Sillsby and our constituents.
So we have a motion, and we have Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Sillsby, to approve the denial of the zoning committee, and to...
I know the Health and Housing's canceled for June, so it would be on, I'd ask it to be on July meeting.
July agenda.
But then, if staff has any other information, they can bring that to us, too.
Right, I'm just looking. Yes.
There was some discussion at zoning about putting this on the dam, and that there had been agreement years and years ago.
That's part of the issue, yes.
Okay, as you guys are aware of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to deny this. All in favor of denying this recommendation?
And send it to committee.
And send it to committee. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Sir, I, we've kind of passed the public participation, but we will, if you want to stick around afterwards or tech with Mr. Sabo, he'll tell you when that meeting is.
Well, I'm just going to let him know I got the schedule. It's a portable shed, and it's being moved this week to the first part of next week. I've already got it scheduled.
Okay, well, why don't you then touch base with Mr. Sabo, though, and we'll have this resolved, maybe. Okay? Thank you. Okay, very good. Here, Bobby, get me your card. Thank you very much for that information.
Now, I do apologize. I didn't realize I was doing anything wrong with it.
That's no problem. Thanks for coming by. Okay, we go on to the next one.
All right, number three, case 34, May 14, Jamie Greenfield, the office requesting a signed installation permit for the area of special control in order to install three awnings for a total area of 44.8 square feet at 21 North Church Street, located in a C2-heavy commercial zoning district.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Holt. Do I hear discussion? All in favor of this motion and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Case 35, Darren Dawkins, requesting a special use permit in order to operate a used car dealership at 2460 West Highway 161, located in D1 Light Industrial Zoning District.
I make a motion.
Motion to approve? Motion to approve? Motion to approve, Alderman Ridgewitz, second by Alderman Randall, to approve case number 35. Any discussion? And have the proper ordinance drawn. All in favor of this motion and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Case 36, Curtis Family, Gary Hueselman, requesting a used variance in order to utilize part of the property for residential programs at 900 Royal Heights Road, located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district.
I make a motion that we approve the recommendations of zoning board.
Motion by Alderman Ridgewitz, second by Alderman Randall, to approve this recommendation as stated by the zoning board and have the proper ordinance drawn. Any comments? All in favor of this motion and have the proper ordinance drawn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Is that the last one there? We move on. We have a treasurer's report, city of Belleville funds and statement of cash and investments for April 2014. What's your pleasure? Anybody?
We'll be receiving and filing.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Kinsella, to receive and file. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Treger, can you explain the negative amounts?
What item?
Well, I just don't understand how under receipt we have negative amounts.
Actually, Jamie would probably be the best to handle that. Those are revenue items. Well, actually, the...
All right, I'll just pick one. Metro East Auto Task Force.
Okay.
It says minus $38,000.
Yeah, that's actually a blow through the Metro East Auto Task Force. You see that grant from the state that they have to accommodate, that it's totally, the revenue component against the formal, it's a check. But since it's not our expense, we all feel that it's a negative amount.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
We have a motion, and we have a second to accept and file the treasurer's report. Any other additional questions? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Or reports, Alderman Seibert.
Yes, Your Honor, I have a recommendation from the Streets and Grades to approve Cass Caski engineering, preliminary engineering services agreement in the amount of $128,810. Physical year 14, 15, design services in the amount of $121,998. So after 15, 16, sewer separation design services in the amount of $83,620, physical years 14 and 15, for a total cost of $334,428. So moved, Your Honor. Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Your Honor, I wanted to state, for the record, at the Streets and Grades Committee, as many people know, I discussed the concern of lack of a RFQ process, and after going through that process and discussion, the fact that Cass Caski had done the current streetscape and moving over as an extension, there's good reason to keep the same firm. In some regards, some could argue with their experience and knowledge that it could actually save city funds. I also wanted to point out for the record, that, you know, not only is this the streetscape, which will help these businesses, which is a block from my house, and some of the vacant buildings there that we're trying to attract, but the sewer separation is a very, very key thing. Not only is it involves EPA demands, but the residents in those neighborhoods, in my neighborhood, as you know, Mayor, and that the underpass there, and the odor. So all in all, this is a great project. One of the questions is, though, that has been brought to my attention, and I felt the need to at least ask, is with this project, with the police project, with the police station project, etc., maybe you might want to direct this question back to the finance director. We are not, I just want to confirm that we are not spreading ourselves too thin with all of these projects as it relates to revenue, with recent memos stating that revenue has been declining.
We have certainly tackled many projects at one time in years past. Will there be choices and decisions to make as we do the budgeting in the future? Yes. But we feel pretty confident at this time that this project can be accomplished, and the police department project can also be. It's not to say that there won't be some tough decisions as we move down the way, but it certainly can be done. I will agree with you about the sewer separation. Those lines get charged extremely heavy. I personally experienced years ago where the manhole cover blew up, blew off, hit my vehicle, blew out the tire, and scared the bejeebers out of me during a rainstorm. So, I mean, I've personally experienced the damage and how that, how much pressure that that line gets charged with when there's just an inch, inch and a half of rain. So it needs to be done. It's the right thing. And as you said, Cass Caski did a great job for us in the streetscape downtown. They won an award for it, recognized by the state, and they also recently were recognized by IDOT as the top engineering firm in the state this past year. And I think we are very confident that you all made the right decision in committee, and hopefully tonight, to move forward with this project with them. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to echo for the record that this also affects Ward II, and the business owners I've talked to have all been...
We can't, I can't, we can't promise, and Royce and I...
They're all in favor.
Yeah, I agree. And we can't promise that just separating this one section is going to solve the problems. It's going to start to help.
Right.
Just this rain we had last Friday, my wife's business on 200 Block of West Main had probably two to three inches of water in the basement. It came down so fast, so quick, that it has to have a place to go. So this will, in our business that we used to be in at 14th and Main, it would flood every time you had that kind of a rain. So I think, I think we're on the right tracks. It's going to take a number of years, but we will get there.
And again, Your Honor, this is money coming out of TIF III. There's a lot of, you know, people asking, you know, why, why are we not doing, you know, my road, this road, you know, or what about my neighborhood? And I just want to make it very clear, that, you know, even in Ward II, Ward V, that this, you know, is, you know, beautifying Main Street, but there is going to be residual effects that are going to help the neighborhoods of both wards in two and five that are on both sides.
Soon as we can get the sewer issues under control, it's going to help health and safety greatly when we can get those backups to not occur. It's going to take some time, but this is the beginning in that stretch. It's a very important beginning. We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? I'd ask for roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Holt.
Yes, sir. On behalf of the Historic Preservation Commission, I motion that we approve Preservation Research Office as the consultant to complete the National Register Historic District Review and Expansion Project. Seventy percent of the project will be paid for with a grant from IHPA.
We have a motion by Alderman Holt. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear a discussion? Yes, ma'am.
What is the total cost to the city on this? It says seventy percent will be paid for...
Eric, do you know what our cost, Eric's not here. Emily, do you know what our cost Eric, do you know what our cost, or Eric's not here, uh, Emily, do you know what our cost is? Yeah, Jamie does.
Really, it's about twenty thousand in total and about forty thousand back.
I know she should use the microphone, but she is, uh, having a tough day, uh, being so close to, uh, her due date, so we're gonna, we're gonna yield that because of the situation.
It's gonna be six thousand dollars.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and we have a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications.
A, communication from Relay for Life of Belleville requesting the opportunity to paint the town purple by tying ribbons to light posts and staking signs around town starting July seventh and to be taken down no later than July twenty-first, two thousand fourteen.
You wanna do that one separate? Make a difference?
Yeah, do it separate.
We hear a motion to approve this-
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, who made the motion? Alderman Hayden, second by Seibert. Any discussion on this first one? All in favor of approving this communication, uh, reference to the, uh, Relay for Life, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
And B, we're looking for motion to revise approved, uh, September Metro East Pride Festival on June twenty-first, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Heisler, this, let me say, this was approved several meetings ago. Alderman Schmidt and I, uh, met with the group, they've asked to include now First Street, and after listening to them, they've done First Street, it was, it was expanded to First Street several years ago, and listening to them and about, based on safety, and then they did one more thing that I asked, I made sure that they talked to the businesses and they have, uh, up and down, and I checked on several of them, uh, they all agreed that this was fine, so I would recommend that we would approve this revision, uh, to allow this to include the closure of First Street from, uh, uh, Main to A and Main South to Washington on that same time. So we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion?
And this would include the, uh, section between on West Main from the crosswalk?
Well, it's, to, to close it there, you're gonna have to close it off at the crosswalk at just south of the, just west of the square.
Right.
Okay? So we have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of this recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Motion carries. We move on. Uh, petitions, we have none. Resolutions, I'd ask we read by title only, resolution thirty-one ninety-one. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt to read resolution thirty-one ninety-one by title only. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
A, resolution number thirty-one ninety-one, a resolution resolving that the city of Belleville requests permission from IDOT to close Route one fifty-nine at the Public Square from eight AM Friday, June twenty-seventh until one AM Sunday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, for wine, dine and jazz.
Motion to approve resolution thirty-one ninety-one.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt to approve this resolution. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ordinance says I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordinance seventy-seven seventy-eight, seventy-seven seventy-nine, seventy-seven eighty, seventy-seven eighty-one, seventy-seven eighty-two.
Motion to approve and read as a group.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman, uh, Schmidt, you agreed as a group also, and by title only and as a group. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
A, ordinance number seventy-seven seventy-eight is zoning ordinance in regard to case thirty-two, May fourteen. Uh, Denny Robitelli, Yellow Tomato Imports. B, ordinance number seventy-seven seventy-nine is zoning ordinance in regard to case thirty-four, May fourteen. Jamie Greenfield, office. C, ordinance number seventy-seven eighty, a zoning ordinance in regard to case thirty-five, May fourteen. Darren Dawkins. D, ordinance number seventy-seven eighty-one, zoning ordinance in regard to case thirty-six, May fourteen. Curtis Family, Gary Hussleman. E, ordinance number seventy-seven eighty-two, an ordinance amending chapter fifty-two of the revised ordinances of the city of Belleville Illinois amended by amending portions of sections thereof.
Motion to approve ordinance seventy-seven seventy-eight, seventy-seven seventy-nine, seventy-seven eighty, seventy-seven eighty-one and seventy-seven eighty-two, so moved.
Second, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Hayden to approve those ordinances. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Laney, it's a new business.
Can we talk about the sidewalk? What's the story?
I've had to, excuse me, I've had discussions with the property owner's, uh, engineer about the revisions of the drawing to be ADA compliant, and I'm scheduling a meeting with the property owner for approval of same.
Okay, remind me why the property owner needs to be involved when it's the sidewalk that's the issue?
Well, this is, that was the manner in which I inherited the, the project. There was a discussion about approval by the property owner. Tim could probably shed some light on.
The property owner, in, in all honesty, said right away, as I reported and Tim reported, that there was a hardship in not putting it back the way it was, and as we told everyone here some time ago, that it was put back after we had that whole section of Washington Street open and had a very rainy couple of weeks, and water got into several of those basements big time. So we made a decision to seal it up, ordinance square was coming because he was disputing, um, and, and we had to listen, there were several potential drawings of what might work, but, uh, he claimed changing it was going to be a hardship to the use of their building. So then it got into a request, a conversation with IDOT, which took a number of months. So now Mr. Harner's working with them, and I think we've finally are making progress, but, and for a while, quite honestly, it got put on the back burner with everything else going on, I'm not gonna deny it, until it was, you know, brought forward here recently and then Garrett got involved, and, uh, so hopefully we'll have it resolved quickly.
How long will the state of Illinois withhold that check before it becomes null and void?
No, that's, I don't think, yeah, most of the time the state doesn't even ask for their share of money for sometimes, in fact, if you, just to give you an idea of how they run, last year they just finally asked for their match for the fountain, uh, streetscape. Am I correct?
Yeah, that was two thousand eight.
It's two thousand eight, so believe me, we're not, we're not, uh, um, we're not out of the loop with them. We'll, we'll be fine.
Okay, other question, we had a lady here last time with a display board and there was some discussion about construction taking place in her neighborhood that hadn't been permitted.
Uh, that's been dealt with, I talked to the lady, Garrett's talked with them, I think, Jim, you, did Garrett issue you a written response yet, but that's, uh-
No, but I, I spoke with an attorney for the, uh, for a neighboring property owner and, and he appeared satisfied with the explanation of what everyone's property rights were.
Okay.
And we're still gonna work with that lady and it may end up going back to, and Tim, we gotta talk tomorrow, 'cause I did have a good conversation with her on Friday again, um, it may go back to traffic or something in regards to parking or, uh, helping her in some way, but she understands now that, uh, the, the other property owner had a right to access that property.
Sure.
So, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, your honor, a- as, as most of the public knows, uh, my entire adult life since I was eighteen, I've been involved in the, uh, Belleville Quarry League, uh, that is my volunteer organization of choice, and I spend, uh, numerous hours down there. Uh, earlier in the year, unfortunately, the Hayden, uh, flagpole was, uh, damaged and thrown through the concession stand at, uh, Arnold Field and vandalized, uh, they didn't get nothing, uh, but, uh, we're in the process of getting that fixed, and then, uh, in the past, uh, two, three weeks, uh, the headquarters, the four eleven West Monroe was broken into twice, now that we are in ball season, we lost several hundreds of dollars of cash, uh, as well as candy in, in the damage itself, and serving on the board of directors and past president chairing the insurance committee and following through on what I needed to do, uh, I first, uh, as the chief has advised me, uh, communicated with Lieutenant Icecamp, he put me in touch with Captain Moody and, and, uh, you know, he basically told me that they were going to, uh, you know, look at this, uh, tenaciously, and, uh, they did, your honor, and, and they, from what I understand, these, uh, they're juveniles and they had also broken into, uh, uh, the concession stand down at Latterman, but they have caught these people and the Belleville Quarry Board of Directors is extremely happy that they have taken these kids, uh, off the street, and I want to, on behalf of the Quarry League, thank, uh, the, the chief, Captain Moody and Lieutenant Icecamp and all of those, uh, detectives involved in that, that they've, uh-
Yeah.
-solved this issue, and I want that noted in record.
Well, you got a couple officers listening now, it will certainly go in the record and will tell the chief, uh, but now they made me aware several days ago that they had cleaned that up and, uh, hopefully, I, hopefully be able to get some restitution.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just wanna let everybody know that we are now able to take Visa card. We, uh, finally got the implementation integration of PSN, uh, completed, went live with the link to their site this morning, uh, we've been actually testing since last week, and I know that a lot of residents are wanting to pay their sewer and trash bill with Visa card, I do apologize for the delay, we had some, uh, issues with the agreement, which you had to get resolved before we went any further, and, uh, we were able to get that done, so if, uh, any residents call you, go ahead and let them know that if they go to Belleville dot net, our homepage, click on the online payments link, which will take you to our, our page, and then they click the link from there to go to, uh, Payment Service Network, and then they would set up an account, uh, for their, uh, using their name and account number, and then at that point they can, uh, pay their bills online, uh, eventually we'll get to a point where after, as we, as we move along, uh, as we go month to month, we actually will build up history, usage history, payment history, uh, in their database, and people will be able to access that, uh, they can, uh, request e-bills, where they, the e-bill, the, they will get an email from PSN that the bill is ready to be paid, and they can also actually, if they, uh, want, which actually will save the city money, they can opt out of receiving those little blue postcards, uh, as well, so, um, but everybody's welc-, any, any residents, anybody's welcome to come by the treasurer's office and we'll be happy to, uh, explain the process to them, help them through the process if they need to, but we'll be, uh, happy to help them out. Thank you.
Very good. I have two more quick announcements. One of the things I put on the, uh, your desk tonight is just a reminder, this Friday night is the trivia night for the, uh, Belleville Police Department's Shop with the Cop Program. It's a great program each Christmas, a lot of, uh, kids who are underprivileged, uh, benefit from that. They're still looking for tables, so I'm hoping some of you can join us in, uh, uh, getting a couple tables together yet for this, uh, trivia night. Bel Air Bowl, and it's, uh, this Friday, uh, the sixth of, uh, sixth of June, doors open at six fifteen, trivia seven thirty. The other thing I wanna mention is that we also put as, uh, Chief Clay is involved, uh, heavily with the Southern Illinois Police Chiefs Association, they're gonna have a fundraiser here in Belleville, there's a flyer there, it's a, uh, it, it's great to see that the chief, police chiefs are, um, he's bringing some of these activities to Belleville, their organization supports a lot of training and an awful lot of, uh, they do a lot of work together, working with resourcing, all networking, all police departments, but then they also do have a host of, uh, of, uh, groups that they support, particularly Big Brother, I mean, uh, uh, Special Olympics for Kids is one of their biggest, so this is another thing coming up, the flyers there, a few more in the back table, so, uh, you might think about supporting that, yes, ma'am.
As long as we're doing commercials, old Belleville days is Saturday.
I was gonna get to that, very good, you can go ahead.
Okay, starting at ten AM at the corner of, um, Garfield and Abind, you're gonna be there, um, I believe Congressman Eniot's gonna be there.
I think at ten o'clock, we're gonna have opening remarks.
We've got dancers, singers.
It's gonna be a great, we've had these several years ago, but this year we asked them to do this again in conjunction with the bicentennial, the two-hundredth. It, it's, I, I would encourage all of you to come, there's a number of homes open for tour, um, it is really a great way to get a real taste of how Belleville was a hundred to a hundred and fifty years ago in the, in the earlier days, and it's, uh, you know, Gustav Kerner Museum is right there, you'll get a chance to go into some of these museums, Emma Kunz's home, the Belleville Historical Society's, uh, location, I guess the, uh, I, I assume that the St. Clair County will also be open, I don't know, I, I think so, but, but they're all there.
Our house is doing an archaeological dig.
A dig, they're gonna have an archaeological dig, uh, they're, they're gonna see if they can find a few, uh, artifacts that were left there by Kerner or Lincoln or somebody, uh, it, it's just exciting, it's gonna be fun, so please come over, also the Bruin Q's going on downtown, there's a lot happening this next Saturday, and, and, uh, I, I think it's just great, uh, I applaud all the organizations who continue the volunteers to put these events on, and they've all been successful, this past weekend, the Shriners Parade has so many volunteers, I, I don't know, but Chief and I both agreed, it had to be one of the largest crowds we've ever seen, and, uh, went extremely well, we were blessed with the weather breaking, but it brings a lot of people to downtown and, uh, they, our bus, our businesses benefit. So those are pretty much all the announcements. If there's no more, I would ask at this time for a motion to approve the motor fuel claims, five thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and six cents. Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson. Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
For the purposes of discussing, I don't believe we have any personnel tonight, but, uh, litigation or property acquisition. So moved by Alderman Schmidt, second. Second by Alderman Kinsella, do I hear discussion? All in favor of going into executive session for those reasons, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, there's a good possibility, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in open session, and at this time, uh, we had on the agenda a possible resolution authorizing the purchase of property, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-one ninety-two. Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second. Second by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear discussion? All in favor of reading a resolution, uh, uh, number thirty-one ninety-two by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Resolution number thirty-one ninety-two, a resolution authorizing the purchase of real estate.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by, who made the second? Alderman Schmidt? We have a motion and a second to, uh, exercise this resolution purchasing real estate. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Ayes have it. Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman, who made the second? Alderman Schmidt again. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.